Wake up, Wake County, and the Wake County League of Women Voters present the 2011 Wake County School Board District Six Candidate Forum.
Thank you for coming. Let me give a little bit of instructions to the audience first. Please turn off your cell phones. And please remember to refrain from applauding the candidates when they speak. This is a forum. A forum is designed to give all the candidates an opportunity to present themselves and to speak on the issues. Members of the Wake County Board of Education serve a four-year term. All members represent a district in the county. Voters must be residents of that district in order to vote for a candidate in that district. The districts serve staggered terms. This year, districts three, four, five, six, and eight are open for election. All candidates are nonpartisan, meaning they are not running as representatives of a political party. Okay. And now, and tonight, we're doing District Six. Instructions to the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes to address the first three questions. I will read the questions at the end. The candidates have received those three questions in the mail already. They have drawn numbers to determine the order in which they will speak for those opening statements. George Morgan will speak first. Mary Ann, no, Christine Kushner will speak second. Donna Williams will speak third, and Mary Ann Weathers will speak last. I have placed the candidates on the podium or on the front of the room by alphabetical order. That's all it means. Okay. Okay, and then, closing statements will go in reverse. I have two timers in the beginning, in the front row. If you could raise your hands. So would you keep an eye on the timer? Who will give you a 15-second warning with the yellow card? And then, at the end, will give you a stop? And if you would please, end when you're signaled to do so. Okay, the first, okay, and then, I'm, then, when we go to the other questions, they will have a minute and a half to answer each question. When we finish those introductory questions and some other questions that I'm going to ask, audience members may ask questions. Audience members will be allowed to ask not more than two questions per person. Okay. All candidates must respond to each question. Please keep all questions to the point, and please limit any preliminary explanation to your question. And also, when you go up to the mic, I think that's the mic that they're going to use there, when the audience, you can just, when, at that point, you can line up. Please be careful, there are cords all over the place, so please just be careful when you're moving around the room. And then, when we finish those questions, the candidates will have three minutes to deliver a closing statement, and they will go in reverse order. Okay? All right, the first three questions, I will just read them because you guys already know them, and you've prepared your answers. What do you hope to accomplish when you serve on the Wake County Board of Education? What specific skills and qualities would you contribute to the Board of Education? And lastly, serving on the Board of Education is an extremely time-consuming commitment to the community. It can also be very stressful. Why do you want to take on this challenge? Okay, so the first person to go is George Morgan.
Okay, I'll go first. I'm at an awkward moment here because when I taught for 36 years, I was standing most of the time. But I guess getting on the board will be different. Number one, I'm going to refer to each question by a number. I hope you remember those questions. Number one, when I'm elected to the Wake County School Board, I will work with its members to provide opportunities for every student to achieve academically in a safe environment. Some of my ideas for improving student achievement include requiring academic coaching be made at every grade level for all students who need it. Increasing the number of required math and science units in order to prepare our students to compete globally in the science and biotech industries. An increase in the number of healthful living and physical education units in order to promote the adoption of healthy lifestyles, which could lead to a reduction in juvenile diabetes and obesity. Number two, I have a strong analytical and problem-solving skills. I was employed by the Wake County Public School System as a biology teacher, a coach, physical ed teacher, healthful living teacher, and a physical science teacher, assistant principal, transportation supervisor, driver education teacher, seventh-grade science teacher, special programs teacher assistant, interim teacher, and substitute teacher. All of these positions require me to have some knowledge of school board policies, school law, student assignment, curriculum and instruction, collaboration, and technology. All of my skills and experience would make me an effective member of the school board. I want to help every student in Wake County Public School System achieve their full potential as citizens of Wake County.
Mr. Morgan? Can you just, okay, great.
My name's Christine Kushner, and I'm running for District Six. I thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you to Wake Up and Wake County, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight. I have several things to, I want to accomplish in the next four years. First and foremost, we need to restore confidence in the Board of Education in Wake County. We need to have, move beyond the acrimony that we've had in the last two years, and get to the issues of academics, curriculum, and beyond, and put the focus back on students and teachers. I want to put aside politics, there's no place for partisanship on the Board of Education, and work to have enrichment in our schools. I will come to the Board as a parent, a leader, and an advocate. I've been a parent in the school system for the last 11 years. My students have had a wonderful experience in Wake County schools, and I want that for every child in every school in Wake County. I'm not an angry parent running for the school board with a personal or political agenda. I'm someone who wants to advocate for public education in Wake County. I'm also a leader. I've worked professionally as a policy analyst, and I've been working in the schools, both inside the classroom as a tutor, as a PTA leader, but also with teachers on school improvement teams, with superintendents on the superintendent-parent advisory council, and also with board members on district advisory council. So I've worked in policy on this, in the school system. And finally, this is a, I've been going to some school board meetings for the last two years, and trying to communicate with parents the issues that have been going on in our schools. So I've been going to these board meetings for two years, and I still want this job. I am, I am ready for this job. It's a critically important time in our school system, and I will advocate for District Six schools. I will advocate for every school in Wake County because I feel it's important at this crossroads to go forward, not to go backward to any policies of the past, and not to continue down this road that we're on, a fragmented policymaking. We need to truly look out for every student in every school in our county. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Williams?
As a mother of four, all who attended K through 12 at Douglas, Carroll, and Sanderson in District Six, and now, I am the grandmother of seven, who all live here in Wake County, I fully understand what the parents are dealing with when it comes to the education of their children. I see many of the same issues happening today that were happening 20 years ago in our schools. In my opinion, it's due to the poor program equity and an unstable assignment model. Getting the appropriate attention and resources to District Six schools is at the top of my list. I believe District Six has had too little representation, for too, for too long, sorry. While I will be a member of the Wake County School Board, I will never forget that I'm here to ensure that the students of District Six have the representation, and they get their fair share of the opportunities that are available in our county to all of our children. Improving student achievement and empowering our parents is, both of them are at the top of my list. I believe that if a student is ready for a more rigorous course, then yes, we need to ensure that. But by utilizing our test scores, teacher input, and parental involvement, we can then say that we've done our very best to educate our children. I do believe that parents need to be given a choice of where their child attends school. I believe that this will allow those parents to be more involved, more empowered, and it is the child who is the winner in the end. I will take a nonpartisan approach as I serve on this board. To me, this is not a red or blue issue. This is about our children. It is about all of our children. And the motto at Brentwood Elementary is "Every Child, Every Day," and as far as I'm concerned, that's exactly what it's about. Why? Well, it's very simple. I believe that our children, our families, and our community deserve better. Wake County, and especially District Six, has been through very difficult times in the last 20 years, and I'd like to improve that. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. I'm Mary Ann Weathers. I'm a Raleigh native. Some of you may have never seen one before, but this is what we look like. I've been educated here in Raleigh, and I've had a 40-year career as a professional educator. Deadly indifference is the term being used to refer to the disaster that followed Hurricane Katrina. Deadly indifference is what led to the school board we have in place right now. We've got to do something about that. We have a failure in leadership. The school board is broken, and the collateral damage has become the teachers and the students. Teachers are demoralized, students are being dehumanized. If we keep in the current path that we are on right now, we'll wind up as a county with apartheid in place. The white minority will be calling the shots for the majority, which happens to be children of color right now. I have 40 years' experience working with boards at every level, the local level, the state level, and even at the national level. I've worked with school boards in places where I could see Canada. And I want you to know, there's some good ones, and there's some bad ones, but I've never seen one as bad as the Wake County School Board right now, and it breaks my heart. Martin Luther King said, "We need a tender heart and a tough mind," and that's what it's going to take to fix this problem. And I promise you that in my concluding remarks, I will give you my four-step plan for fixing the mess.
All right. The next question will go, we will start with Christine Kushner, and then, after that. Wake County's graduation rate is slightly over 80 percent, meaning that of all students entering high school, about one in five does not graduate within five years. Should the district be doing more for at-risk students? What would this be, and what grade levels would you focus as intervention?
One of my key issues in the next four years will be to focus on middle school curriculum. This board has taken a step in having more rigor in math placement, and making sure that students who are ready for eighth-grade math, for taking algebra in eighth grade, are placed in algebra. And I support that step by the school board. I think we need to go deeper into the middle school curriculum. If we look at our high schools, they are fairly strong in curriculum. When we look at middle schools, I see more of a gap in curriculum. And I want to make sure, we make sure that middle school students are strong in language skills. Having a strong vocabulary is one of the keys strengths, and having a high SAT score, GRE scores, and those are also very important, along with advanced math, to advancing to college and to vocational and to career success. So we, I would like to look at middle school specifically and make sure that our students enter into ninth grade prepared to graduate on time. And I see that as a key. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, you go next.
Okay, there are two things in this question that we must address, and one of them's been a problem for years, is what happens to these students in the ninth grade? And ninth grade is when we, they fall, they fall apart. Also, there's another, if you drop down into the elementary school, in the third and fourth grade, there's also a leveling out of students in achievement. That's, that's the thing that we need to address. Now, I have proposed, I talked with some people in the Chamber of Commerce, we must bump up the math-science program in our schools if we're going to meet the needs of the biotech industries. One of the things they're doing now is going outside our county and recruiting students, bringing them in, and we need to start thinking about partnering with these companies, like they're doing everywhere else in the United States, with colleges and with the, Cisco is one of them, they're doing it all over the country, and get these students ready for these apprentice programs. And that will be something that will bump up our achievement level, because then we will have something else to show of student achievement. How many students go into that apprentice program? We already know how many go to Wake Tech, and we now already know how many students go to our four-year colleges.
Ms. Weathers?
Research indicates that the problems begin in third grade for the students who don't graduate. They don't start in ninth or 10th grade, they start in about third grade. I'm concerned because so many of our students, and if you'll pick up my information at the back, you'll see the numbers on this, so many of our students, one out of four, come from poverty situations. 55 percent come from homes with one parent. Now, these students need a special attention to their personal needs. They are not getting the monitoring at home that they need, probably because their parents are either out working or are just unavailable to them. We've got to tend to that. But specifically in terms of content, I would reinvent vocational education. I think that for too long, we have neglected that, and that, that offers great promise to all sorts of students. Not every child is college-bound, so we have to give them options besides the academic path.
Well, the first thing I want to say is that the last five years prior to the new current board, our graduation rates in Wake County kept declining, and in the last year, they've actually improved. So I want to say, even though I know a lot of people might not be happy with what's being done, I do believe there's been a lot of good things being done, and I'd just like to touch on them very quickly. We have 10 new specialized, say, academies, if you want to say, schools that have opened up in Wake County. The STEM program is one, it's at NC State, it's an early college program that I've visited. It is absolutely fabulous. It is for our underserved, underprivileged children, and I think it's an incredible beginning for us. There is the Renaissance School at Brentwood. It's amazing, and if you haven't visited, at least go check their website out. And it is designed for these students, and I so think we are really, what I see is we're beginning to step out of the box, because what we've been doing has not been working, and I'm talking for the past 30 years. And I think there are many new ideas on the table right now that are working. I do agree that personally, I would love to see a vocational option. Where I grew up, we had that. There were many high school students that were not going to go to college, and we don't offer that here, and I do think that's something worth looking at. And my last point would be, we have started an entirely new system in Wake County because of EVAS, and we are looking at seventh graders, we're looking at their last three years, I'm sorry, sixth, we're looking at their last three years, and we are elevating students into Algebra I, which is the gateway to the rest of their educational career. We've made a lot of positive changes, so I just think, let's keep that, but let's continue looking for new ones. Thank you.
All right, the next question will go first to Mr. Morgan. The current school board is currently reviewing new options for a student assignment plan. What is your vision for this assignment plan, and how would you propose to work with Superintendent Teta's proposals?
First of all, the new student assignment plan isn't complete yet. It hadn't completely flowed to the superintendent's desk. I've been going to several of the parental meetings about the choice plan. Number one, I know some people in this room is going to know, how my child going to get to the school? You know, transportation, because I worked for about 10 years in transportation, that was the number-one concern. Parents wanted to know about transportation. That hasn't been worked out yet. So be careful. I'm just, there should be some concern about this program as far as the logistics that need to be put in place. Secondly, there's a program that they haven't put out there yet to tell you how many seats there are in each school, and your choice. That's something that's on the back burner. That hasn't come out yet. So my comment is, let's wait until we have everything in place before you can present that plan to your parents, because all of those things going to be your, your concern. I'm not criticizing the plan, but I'm telling you that you must really take note of the plan, and go to those meetings, and ask those questions, because it's been a very low turnout at the meetings that I've attended. Very low turnout.
Ms. Weathers?
I've been impressed with the superintendent's attempt to address all of these needs in terms of assignments. I'm delighted that the magnet program will stay in place. I saw what happened in Charlotte Mecklenburg when it became strictly neighborhood schools again. The entire community reverted to the segregation of the 50s and 60s. It was not a good idea. A plan that offers each child what that child needs according to his or her talents and special needs has to be the goal. Now, how we get there, I'm not sure that we've seen all the possibilities yet. I know there are other things going on around the country, some of these things we need to look at. I don't think it's a hit-and-miss kind of thing. We've got to be careful about this. We don't have the resources to waste on trying things that we know will not work.
The first thing I will say is, there have been comments here that are absolutely correct. It's not complete yet. What I see in it is it does offer choice to parents, and it offers stability, and I think that's something we have not had for a long time here. I also want to say, if you are a parent looking at what is on the website right now, it's tentative, there's going to be, I think, a lot of changes come before, before it's complete, but if you see something that you don't like, please send an email to our school board. At the meeting on Tuesday, our superintendent clearly stated, of the 144,000 children in our schools right now, he's received 12 emails about this plan. And I know, because I've talked with a whole lot more than 12 people who are telling me they're not happy. So you need to communicate it. Don't make an assumption that they know. Their decisions are, they want parental input. If you cannot attend a meeting, at least look at it, send an email, get your friends to do the same thing. And the other thing I will just say is, we have been told that, or I've read, I'm sorry, that the vote on this will not happen until after this election. And of course, I hope I am elected to be your representative, and if I am, then I will tell you, I will insist that at least my input is part of this final decision, because here I am, out meeting the voters, meeting the parents, going to the schools, and I'm hearing an awful lot of concerns, and I would very much like to be a part of that final decision. Thank you.
Well, it's been two years of focusing on student assignment. This current board has spent 80 percent of their agenda items on student assignment, and we still don't have a plan in place. You're right, there's a lot of uncertainty. I feel that student assignment plan needs to have academic success for all students as the very top priority. I also value choice, I value stability and proximity, and I have been pleased by seeing some of the aspects of this choice plan. However, the feeder patterns that have been coming out as part of this plan are not acceptable to District Six. They undermine stability and proximity in District Six. They have Joyner Elementary feeding to Millbrook High School instead of its traditional Broughton. I think Joyner's fed to Broughton for several decades. They have Douglas feeding to Millbrook instead of Sanderson, and they have Brooks passing both of those buses going down to southeast Raleigh. The current feeder patterns that have been proposed are not upend the stability and proximity that District Six has had for decades, and I think that needs to be worked on. And I believe Carolyn Morrison told me she's gotten 200 emails today on feeder patterns. This is something that I encourage all of you to be vigilant about and to look into. And for those of you, the 70 percent of Wake County that do not have children in the schools, why should you care about student assignment? One of the top priorities also has to be using our capacity wisely, and that's something, an analysis that hasn't come out on this student assignment plan as well, and something that we need to see as a community, because again, 70 percent of our residents don't have students in the school, and they need to make sure that we are using the existing capacity of our schools wisely. And so, I do think one positive step has been the STEM and the global learning and small-school models that the superintendent and the school system has put in place, which opens up under-enrolled schools through choice. So thank you.
All right. Our third question, we'll start with Ms. Weathers. Effective school boards commit to a vision of high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction, and they define clear goals to achieve that vision. Tell us your top goals.
That's a good question. My top goals are that every single child, not groups, not clusters, not schools, not grade levels, not socioeconomic groups, but every single child has his or her needs met. Now, every child has talents, and every child has needs. I don't think that we can talk honestly without addressing the fact that in some cases, demographics affects destiny, and I think we need to get away from that, ignore that, deal with each child as an individual with potential to do whatever that child dreams of doing with the right skills and the encouragement of good teachers.
Well, I do agree 100 percent. It is about the children, and it is improving our school system for children, for their families, for the community. And I will just share one of the things that we all learned at the school board meeting on Tuesday. We are looking at a model in Guilford County, and these are the same-gender schools. And as I sat there listening to this presentation, and I am thinking about our children that are the most underserved and the most in need of our help, and I truly think, what an incredible thing for us to be looking at. These schools in Guilford County have been in existence since 2003, and their graduation rates are incredible. The girls' school last year, it was 100 percent graduating, 100 percent going off to college. And these are children, had they been left in the public school system, most likely would not have probably even, I'm assuming they wouldn't be in college, it would be questionable would they have ended up graduating. There, they've just had incredible results, and I am looking, I'm thinking of Wake County, and I'm thinking, you know, other places are doing these things, we need to learn from this. I was thrilled to hear that we're looking at that. So yes, it's every child, that's absolutely the most important, because that affects our community. Our children are our future. Our children is what brings this community to continue forward in a positive direction, and as far as I'm concerned, if one child drops out of high school, that's one too many, because what happens to that child? That's, as adults, that's our job. Thank you.
Well, my top priority will be to return the focus to students and teachers, and I think we've gotten far too into partisan politics in our school board, and our students deserve better. I agree with Mary Ann that the Charlotte Mecklenburg model is not one to follow, and I would say Guilford, we don't have to go very far in looking at other models in this state to see failed policies in Charlotte Mecklenburg, in Guilford, in Winston-Salem, in New Hanover County, where the schools have been... in New Hanover County, where the schools have been divided into have-and-have-not schools. The academies idea, I think, is a positive idea because I think we need smaller high schools for some of our students that are falling through the cracks in our larger high schools. But I want to make sure that the special programs we create in Wake County that target students who are, some call them at-risk, I like to say at-promise. Students who are promising in ways that we need to support them and make sure that they succeed. I want to make sure that those special programs are not racially identifiable programs. The academy that we saw yesterday, Tuesday rather, at the school board meeting in Guilford County is a, all the students, all the 96 students are African-American. I don't want to see our, the current trends continue of having schools that are racially identifiable in Wake County. So, my top priority is to make sure that we have academic rigor in our schools and academic success in our schools and in every school and for every child in Wake County in a way that creates equitable schools throughout the county. Thank you.
Okay. My priority definitely is focusing in on the students. But then, you got to bring in the teachers. And we've been talking about the students all night here. You have to get the teachers to buy in to the student achievement model that you present them. I remember talking with the teachers the other day, and I told them about the Blue Plan. We have to sell them on that because sometimes those seats will fill up at a certain school, and they still have to go to that school. They may not want to go there. So, that's gonna, that's gonna present a problem. So, I would like to focus in on a highly trained, effective staff because I'm going back to this partnership with a company and a college to bring these teachers in and sell them the program that we want to, them to teach in our schools in order to bring these students into the 21st century in math and science.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, the next question goes to Ms. Williams. The Wake County public schools are likely to need additional funds, oops?
I just want to clarify, you said the first three questions were two minutes.
Right. All these questions are, it was the first, the introductory questions were two minutes. The Wake County public schools are likely to need additional funds to build and improve schools in the near future. Would you support a bond initiative with a potential for increased taxes to raise these funds? If not, why not? If so, how would you convince the citizens of Wake County to support it?
Well, from being at the meeting on Tuesday, the school board meeting, we're going to have to do a bond. I don't see any other way because of the growth of our county. But as far as taxes, in my opinion, families are taxed out right now. It is a tough economy for every single one of us, and I do not believe that raising taxes is the answer. What I do believe in is looking within our school system, which has already started, a lot of money has already been saved, and taking a look at, first of all, where are we duplicating money? Where are we spending money that it's not being effective? And really, to take a magnifying glass and look at this, a lot of that's already happened. Last year, there were over $100 million in cuts that had to happen because of the state budget. And it was done effectively by our current board with zero teachers losing their positions. And I think that speaks volumes as to how much, I'll just say waste for a second, is going on. And I know that's a tough word, and I don't really, I just couldn't think of a better word at this moment. But what I'm saying is, you know, as we go through life, we all get in a pattern, and sometimes it's really comfortable to stay in that pattern. And sometimes it's not comfortable. Take a hard look, ask the hard questions, and make some changes. And that is what's been happening. So, that is my answer to that. Thank you.
According to current projections, in the next 10 years, we're gonna need 30 or more new schools in Wake County. And that is gonna take a bond that adequately plans for growth and appropriately puts schools in the right parts of the county. I think it's important that we have a board in the next four years that has moved beyond divisiveness and that can get a community supporting a bond. If you recall, in 1999, there was a bond that failed in Wake County, and growth continued. And we never caught up. Once we had a second bond, did pass in 2003, but we never caught up from that failed bond. And we had to make a move to more four-track year-round schools. There was a lot of catching up to do. And I feel that having this next bond is critical to the future of our community, the stability of our students, and more importantly, to driving the economic engine of our county that our school system has proven to our county. I think a lot of families have moved here in the last several decades, becoming to take advantage of the high-quality education here in Wake County. And we need to make sure that we continue to offer high-quality education here in Wake County. I think North Carolina is 49th now in the nation in spending, and Wake County is 92nd in Wake County, in the state. So, we are at the bottom of a state that's at the bottom. We need to make sure that we're using our resources wisely, and we need to ask, and we need to make sure we resource, give resources to our teachers.
Okay. We're just finishing up with the 2006 bond referendum where the voters of Wake County approved, I believe it was 70 to 80 million dollar bond issue to refurbish the schools and, of course, build a couple of new schools. I wonder how many of you know there's some money left? There's money left. And this year, I am so glad I've been running for the school board because I'm finding out things. There's some money left, and they plan to spend that money on where there's some needs are in our system. And so, I think that's an unfair question to ask. What would you do? Would you vote for a bond? I think I will vote, but I would certainly have to go back in there and look and see what is happening with that extra money that's there. I believe we had a fellow to tell us that he had enough money to build three schools. Three schools, maybe one high school, three schools. He gave us an approximate cost of those schools. So, yes, I am for the money, but I still need to do some homework and find out exactly where the surplus money is going.
Thank you.
Before we float another bond or raise another tax, we need to do a careful audit of what we're spending our money on now. We need an internal audit, a very detailed internal audit, to make sure that we're not duplicating services, duplicating resources, having redundancy in spending, and extending top-heavy administrative positions that have long seen their day. I would be reluctant to ask for any more money until we become good stewards of the money that we have.
All right. Next question, I guess we'll start again with Ms. Kushner. What are the specific needs of District 6 that you will fight for if elected to the Board of Education?
There are, District 6 is, I think, a unique district in having older, stable neighborhoods that have had stability and proximity in our schools for a long time. There are many schools in District 6 that are magnets because of this. We want to make sure that we have strong programs in place so that the neighborhood students are attracted to those schools for a program, but also that we can use capacity wisely and making sure those schools stay fully enrolled and offering those programs. Joyner, Brooks, Douglas, Underwood Partnership, and Wiley, those are magnets for a reason. And I think we need to make sure that those schools stay strong. Other schools in District, Brentwood is also a magnet with engineering as a focus. And we need to make sure that those schools and those programs stay strong so that they continue to attract students. Traditional schools and the two year-round schools in District 6 also are in more stable neighborhoods that need to make sure that they have attractive programs and fully enroll so that they can hire the full complement of teachers. I think we need to make sure in District 6 that we have teachers assistants that are fully funded. In the last year, because of budget cuts, teachers assistants went from 10 months of employment to nine and a quarter months of employment. And I think that's a classroom need we need to focus on. Thank you.
Okay. I think it opened my eyes, and I've been in District 6 for about 31 years. I found out from the Wake Foundation that we have a higher percentage of free and reduced lunch people in our district, a lot higher than Southeast Raleigh, our next district over. What does that mean? Is that tied in? I think we had a meeting with the superintendent at the Wake Education Foundation building, and he talked about that tie, that is tied to student achievement. So, my, what I think District 6 is all about is that we've had housing shifts here in the city of Raleigh. And I think a lot of that shift is in District 6 now. Because over in the eastern part of our district, we have a lot of apartments, a lot of apartments. Over on the west side, we have mostly single-family housing. So, there, the priorities is probably gonna be to lift student achievement in all those schools in District 6.
My concern in District 6 is the teachers, probably because I know so many of them and because I hear over and over again that they are demoralized. Some consider their programs dumping grounds and have used those words to describe how they feel their students are being treated and how their classrooms are being treated. I want them to be happy teachers because if the teachers aren't happy, the schools aren't happy. Sort of like if mama's not happy, nobody's happy, right? Well, to do this, I think we can give them more impact on the decisions being made about their work. The people doing the work need to be making the decisions about how the work gets done.
In District 6, we do have some wonderful schools. Actually, nine out of our 21 schools are magnet schools, which is excellent for those schools, excellent for the children attending those schools. But then, what about the other schools? There are schools that have, well, some of our magnet schools, back up a minute, have over 100 magnet courses being offered for those students. And that's incredible, and that's wonderful, and I don't ever want to stop that. I support that totally. My concern is that we have schools that have not a single magnet program. And so, I'm looking at this as fair and equitable for the students, for the teachers, for the parents, for the community. What happens in District 6 absolutely affects District 6. And so, that's my first point. My second point is that I do believe, yes, it is making each one of these schools stronger, really taking a look. If these teachers need more help, if they need more resources, we need to figure out how to do that. And I do believe there's extra money in that school system already to be able to do that. So, again, it's going back to that magnifying glass, taking a good look, where is money being spent that is just not giving us the value of what we need? Thank you.
Okay. This is gonna be the last question before we go to the audience. And it was a question that I came up with, but Christine Kushner already mentioned, but we're gonna, I'm gonna ask it anyway. Why should someone who does not have any children in the public schools vote in this election? And more importantly, why should they vote for you? And Mr. Morgan, you can start.
I started one of my sections off asking the people, I know they have been sitting a long time, so I asked them to stand up for public education. And that's one of the things that I, while I'm running, I am for public education. Make no doubt about that. Now, what we have to do, if you don't have any children, you should be concerned because we have a crisis coming. There's a lot of things that's gonna affect public education that's out there now floating around. A lot of questions about whether or not public education is somewhat, I think the term they were using, competing with private schools and charter schools. I think that is something that is an attack. Also, in our legislation, we're getting a bad deal from the legislature. We're not getting our cut. Maybe the lottery needs to bump up the amount of money that we get for education, but it's certainly not coming to public education. So, with all that, I think people who don't have any children in school, they do have a stake in these elections.
Over 70% of taxpayers have no children in public schools. Now, they may have no children at home at all, or they may have children in private schools. They are still taxpayers, and they have an investment in the public schools because the public schools are the source of the strength for the entire community. Now, I used the word stewardship before, and that's what we have to be here. Our stewardship, not only of the taxpayers' money, but of the time and success for those of us who have put years of our lives into public schools. The answer is not privatization. It's not charter schools. It's not private schools. If those people want to play on that playground, let them, but do not take away from the public schools because the public schools are the foundation for the community. I'm worried about the next generation, not so much this election as this generation and the next generation. And I believe that those of us who are taxpayers with no children in public schools need to make sure that our support for public schools stays there.
The first words that I would say is, if you own property in Wake County, 71.91% of your property taxes go to our school system. And if that's not enough to grab someone's attention, then I would say to them, what happens in our schools directly affects our community. If you think about the fact of how many children, unfortunately, even with graduation rates having risen, there's still too many children not graduating. They are dropping out. What happens to these children? My sense is that unfortunately, not a real high percentage of them go on to be a successful, productive citizen in our community, which then helps us all. Unfortunately, many of them go the other direction. And then, I think about businesses that are looking at coming into our community, relocating their business here. The very first thing they're going to do is to like, take a look at our schools. What's going on in our schools? Is this a healthy place for them to move their company to, for their employees to put their children in school here? And so, to me, it doesn't matter if you have children or not. This is a very important election, and it is a very important thing that everybody do, does go out and vote. Thank you.
I agree with Ms. Williams. It's a critically important election, and we are at a crossroads. As I've taken note, I fully recognize 70% of folks who live in Wake County do not have children in the schools, and we need to be good stewards. And we need to make sure that public education stays the economic driving force of our community, of our economy. And also, it serves as a foundation of our civic society. It's important that our children receive rigorous and quality education so that they become the future civic leaders of our community, as well as our future plumbers and doctors and nurses and electricians. I also feel that it's, we need to end the divisiveness that's been on this board. You have to be honest that some of my, one of my opponents is supported by folks who have charter school interests, private school interests, and are not fully supportive of public education in Wake County. I am going to be a fervent advocate for the Wake County public school system. Charter schools have their own Charter schools have their role, private schools have their role, but we need board members who are going to strengthen public education in Wake County through our public school system. And I'm going to be that candidate, and that's why I think you should vote for me.
All right. If people could carefully make their way to that microphone if they have any questions that they would like to ask the candidates. Give you just a couple seconds to line up. Okay. And when we start, we will keep the order that we were going in. So, Ms. Weathers, you will respond first.
Can we all answer the, every single question?
Yep.
Okay. My comments are directed to all the candidates.
And you can give your name. That would be great.
My name is Elizabeth Axteau. My children attended the Wake County Public Schools. I have a grandchild who is now also attending the Wake County, a Wake County School, Public School. The No Child Left Behind Act that was passed at the beginning of the century required children...
Can we, because there's a lot of people behind you, so could you ask your question?
Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay.
Okay. The No Child Left Behind Act that was passed in the beginning of the century required the testing of children in reading and math, and there have been many concerns that this excessive emphasis on testing in reading and math is creating a number of problems, including not paying enough attention to the curriculum in the schools that the children should be exposed to.
Is that your question?
Could you comment on that?
I see several parts to that question. First of all, No Child Left Behind was enacted and not funded. I want to make sure you know that. I think teaching to the test has become a problem for lots of people. If you're testing the right things, that's not a problem. But if you're not testing what you think that you should be testing, then you're not teaching what needs to be taught. My work with curriculum and instruction over the 40 years I've been in the business and in my PhD, too, showed me that we don't test most areas of the curriculum, and some of the most important areas of the curriculum in terms of how the child develops cannot be tested at this point in terms of what we've learned about the art and science of teaching. So, I guess what you're asking is, how do we cross this bridge between our desired curriculum and the testing programs that are in place? My chief objection to No Child Left Behind is that the results have shown us who tests well and not necessarily who's been taught well.
Well, thank you, Elizabeth, for that question. I agree with some of your comments that teaching to the test is not the way to do it. Today, I visited Sanderson High School. I was so impressed with what Sanderson is doing within their walls that I just think we all need to go visit and take a look and bring it back to all the rest of the schools. They are offering programs within that school that don't exist, as far as I'm aware, because I asked the principal, "Does everybody else know you're doing this?" And he's like, "Well, you know." But it is really allowing these teachers to work much closer, hands-on, immediately knowing what these children are learning. Specifically, I'll talk about their math class. They have what's called clickers for the students. So, there's a big whiteboard up here, and the teacher's doing her little, her or his, I apologize, you know, diagram on the board so the students know what's going to happen. And then, they're asked a question. They immediately have to answer it on this clicker, and through the computer, she knows, he knows immediately which student got it, which student didn't. And so, again, it goes back to what I've said earlier, stepping out of the box and taking a look at some innovative approaches for our students so that they can all achieve what it is that we want them to achieve. Thank you.
And I'm also concerned with the drive to standardized tests, because I think there are very few future jobs that are going to require a bubble test as a skill set. I want our students to have 21st century critical thinking skills. They are entering the knowledge-based economy in the information age, and we need to be teaching them those critical thinking skills to help them navigate that information age. They need to know, they're going to be able to look up on their phone the facts and figures that they could, that we're drilling them on on a standardized test. They need to know how to negotiate and navigate that information. They need to know what's quality information and what might be inaccurate information. So, we need to make sure our kids come out with analytical thinking, being able to question and navigate the information age, and also, being able to have quality, high-quality language skills to communicate. And it just, I think we've talked a lot about heightening curriculum on this panel, and I'm glad that we're going to try to have more of a focus on academics and having our students being able to be lifelong learners.
Okay, for the person there, I want to register a complaint. I was in science, and they would never give us test science. They would never do it. And I asked them, we, as science teachers, we asked them to put that in the testing program. But anyway, I think we have moved away from all those tests. I think you're going to find in the future, because we had accountability model built in with money. So many of our teachers in Wake County, because of their test scores, they would receive X amount of money. But I think we've moved away from that now, and I don't think it's going to be, we found out that there's not, that shouldn't be that much emphasis on testing per se. So, I think we're moving forward away from that in years to come.
Hi. My name is Bridgette Burge. I have two little ones at Con Elementary. So, very specifically, for all the candidates, very specifically, what do you know about Wake County Public School System suspensions and expulsion rates compared to other national public school systems? And what's your plan to reduce suspension and expulsions, particularly the gross and unconscionable disparities and pushouts of students of color, English-language learners, and students with disabilities or exceptional students?
Well, I will be honest. I do not know how we rate with the rest of the nation. I don't know. I got into this four weeks ago. I've learned a lot, but I haven't learned about that yet, so I can't answer that. What I can answer is that in the last two years, our suspension rates have greatly been reduced, and there is a program in place right now in Wake County schools, instead of sending these children home when they're being suspended, and then they're at home and they're not accomplishing anything, there are different avenues of dealing with children with these issues. What I'd like to add is, I think as we go forward, because I really do see this new board coming in with innovative ideas, and I do think that it comes back to more family-friendly. If we can allow our schools to be set up so these parents can be a more part of these children's education, we will see a bigger reduction. Thank you.
I do recognize that Wake County, for too long, has been at high suspension rate in the state, and I think there are some positive steps being taken on the current committee that's looking at these policies, Bridgette, to target these suspension rates and make sure that we have students who are engaged in learning and that we make sure that we don't have the pushout that's been going on in Wake County. I want to make sure that the programs we have in place, such as SCORE, are actually rigorous and vibrant for our students. I have some concerns about the SCORE program that I'm trying to find out. I've heard mixed results about SCORE. I've heard some folks think it's great, some don't. But I'm also very concerned that we accurately present the data and that we accurately track, make sure that students are, have in-school discipline, much more so than out-of-school discipline.
Okay. Let me confess, I'm guilty, because I was an assistant principal, so I did send those students home. But let me say this, I do have an idea about that. I'm glad that person brought that up. My idea about reducing student suspensions, especially among minorities and Latinos and all the diversity we have in our school system, I hope I covered them all, because this school system is very diverse, is to have on the school level, when that child is brought to the office, that child needs to have an advocate on that campus, not the guidance counselor now, but there needs to be a teacher advocate coming down to the office with that student and that will speak in behalf of the student. You could have an advocate committee there at the school level, and I tell you, I think your suspension rates and those, along those lines, will go down.
Many of our students do not come to school with self-discipline in place. Those same students are the sons and daughters of parents who do not come to meet the teacher night. There's a connection there, and I think to solve this problem, we're going to have to partner with social services perhaps and coordinate, perhaps, within the schools. I've seen this done in other places around the country, specifically Philadelphia, and it can work. We have to work with the home to improve a situation. We can't expect students to show up with discipline they haven't been taught unless we're ready to remedy the situation.
Okay. Next question.
Hi. My name is John Reader. I had two children that graduated out of the Ligon In-Low Magnet Program. My question, since I see that we have several state legislators and county commissioners here in our room tonight, are you willing to ask the county commissioners and the state legislature for more money for the Wake County Public School System? Why or why not?
Go ahead. Christine.
Thank you for asking that question. Again, as I said, we're 49th in this country in per pupil spending, and we're 92nd in the state of North Carolina, and I think we can do better for our students. I would like to ask the county commissioners to find resources for our school system. I think it's important that we value public education, and I think we, as a community, need to start that conversation in how we're going to value the future of our children and our public school system here in Wake County. I also think that we need, as a board, and as board members representing public education in Wake County, we need to advocate at the state level to have proper resources for our teachers. We have suffered cuts and flat funding for many years. Growth is continuing, and if we want that growth to continue, if we want a vibrant economy, we need to invest in public education.
Yes, I would want to talk with the county commissioner, but I know most of the commissioners, they want to see facts and figures from the school system. And that's, they want to see some information from the school system before they will talk with you. But one of the things over the years, and I don't know now how it is, but there's been a split from the county commissioners and the school board. And we need to really move closer together to be able to work together for the common good of the Wake County students.
I have a young neighbor who's a graduate student in organizational psychology, and he tutored me the other day on the fact that we can't fix the problems with the special interest influence on the public schools until we fix the problems with the special interest influence on the county commissioners and the legislators. So, that's what I think about that.
Well, I'm going to have a very different answer for you. I've already said it twice, I believe, tonight. I don't believe we need more money. I believe it's there. I believe we just need to keep looking at what's in our school system and where is it being spent that's not wise. Once we've done that with a fine-tooth comb and a great big magnifying glass, and if we need more then, then absolutely. But we haven't completed that project yet, and I think that's what has to be done. I would just say to you, for those who are sitting here shaking your head, you've had to tighten your budget, you've had to take a look at every penny you're spending, I know we have, my family has, with the economy. Our school system should be no different. Every business has had to do it. It's the way it is right at the moment with the economy being what it is. If we still need it, we'll get it. But I just believe it's there. We just have to find it within the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question.
Good evening. Adrian Lumpkin. I have four children, three have graduated from Wake County schools, and I have been newly redistricted in District Six. In 2009, four new board members were elected and took office on December 1st, that very day, the day of the first board meeting, they joined with Mr. Margiata to propose sweeping and drastic changes to the assignment policy without consulting the remaining board members in advance. If you are elected to the board, what, if any, immediate changes will you propose to the board, and how do you anticipate communicating those proposals with your eight colleagues? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Morgan, you start.
I thought people had forgotten about that day, because... So, but the, there was a lot of Robert's Rules of Order, that particular day, that was somewhat twisted and violated, I think. Number one, the agenda was changed as soon as the board members were sworn in, and then they went on to move to several items on the agenda, and I thought all that had to be approved prior to the board meeting. So, I'm glad you brought that up, because to be an effective board member, you need to make sure you adhere to the Robert's Rules of Order and make sure that you do things in a certain way that's fair to all, all there. And I think that some of that's been twisted now with the board.
In our opening remarks, I promised you my four-step plan to fixing the mess that is the Wake County School Board, and I suppose this is as good a place as any to give it to you. Number one, I would require, challenge the school board to take a competency test. I think a competency test is in order before you start making decisions on things like accreditation and certification. Number two, I would put in place remediation for the school board members who need it, and there will be some, I guarantee it. Number three, I would suspend the rules and elect a new chairman and vice chairman, because the ones we have are not up to the task. And number four, I would get to work to make up. You know, it takes, sometimes it takes good Democrats to clean up a Republican mess.
Okay. I have to start. This is not supposed to be RRD, right, Mary Ann? Anyway, I would say to you, first and foremost, I, too, am concerned, two school board meetings ago, when I attended, this was my first as a candidate, so I attended that meeting in a different way. I was there to learn, I was there to listen, but I was also watching. And what I saw, I walked out of that room shaking my head. I saw a lot of anger at that table, and it's coming from both sides. So, I'm not going to play a partisan card on this. It's coming from both sides, and I do believe it's unhealthy. I believe that if you are elected to serve on a board of anybody, of whatever that board might be, part of your job is to learn to work together. And I'm just going to say that. There's been so much that's happened in this county in the last two years, you all know that. I sometimes wonder how much of it was from the media, how much of it really, really, really had to be there. And then, we had outside sources coming in here. I was in that room when 18 people got arrested. I was the last speaker that spoke that day and had somebody's finger in my face. It was not good. It does need to be better, and that would be part of what I would do to begin with. Thank you.
I agree in that we need to end the divisiveness that's been on the board for the last two years. And I was there that night in December when the new board came into, was sworn in, and I was taken aback by the partisanship that was introduced into our... and I was taken aback by the partisanship that was introduced into our school system on that night. And I will leave partisan politics out of the board when I'm serving on the school board. The surprise agenda items and the lack of transparency has continued since that night. We had a surprise agenda item added to the board meeting just this past Tuesday, and it's this sort of governance, this sort of poor governance on the part of this Board of Education that has our accreditation under threat. Our excellent high schools, which I think are amongst the best in the state, their accreditation is under threat because of governance on our Board of Education, and one of the first things I will do is try to restore confidence to the Board of Education as a school board member.
Next question?
Thank you. My name's Paul White. I'm one of those 12 emails that Superintendent Tatum got about the feeder patterns. And I feel like the folks who got elected two years ago, they got elected because kids in RIM communities were getting moved around from school to school, and they were trying to get more stability in their assignments. Ms. Kushner pointed out that we're going to need 30 new schools in the next 10 years. Not that much population is probably going to land in District Six, but it's sure going to land around here. How are you going to try to deal with that? Because it seems like the problem's just going to continue to come up, that you're going to have large numbers of students in those communities, and kids are still going to have to get shuffled around, feeder patterns or no.
Well, before we build those schools, I think we need to check the figures for the demand. According to the Chamber of Commerce, companies are now reluctant to move to Wake County because of the dissension on the school board. So, after we make sure we need those schools, I think that they can be incorporated into whatever we find to be successful for District Six or any district, not just, I don't think we need to play favorite districts here.
I do agree that we do not need to play favorites, but I also agree with the gentleman that asked the questions. Most of these new schools will probably not be in District Six. The growth is in the outlying areas of Wake County, and I do believe as a board member that we must work with the municipal and the county planning departments to really understand what is happening with our county and where is this growth specifically, and the data is there. Part of a candidate, we have all attended a forum with the Raleigh Chamber, and it was extremely educational for me. I've never done this before, but to see that there are people, professionals in our county, have this information, let's tap into it. Let's make sure we know exactly what we're doing before we start building the school. Thank you.
Over the last 10 years, projections have gotten much more accurate with growth, and I think we can, with more confidence, our school planners are working with county planners to make sure that we plan properly for our schools. I want us to work with municipalities. I think it's a great idea. The City of Raleigh has a comprehensive plan being put together. I want to work with the city council to see where that new growth is going. If we have high-density, sustainable growth planned in Raleigh, let's see where schools can fit in to that growth. I would like to see us have capacity here in Raleigh because we're very centrally located for the county, and I think we're going to see more growth here in the central part of the county. It's important for us to make sure that when we open a new school, we see if we can make it through choice. We can make sure we place it near high areas of growth and that we work with the county as well as with cities to plan for that growth. Thank you.
Okay, feeder patterns. That question is at a lot of the meetings around the county that Superintendent Tatum's been at. And first of all, he guaranteed, well, I better not say guaranteed, he says he's going to make sure that you feed into the school that you traditionally feeds into. He's going to keep all of that intact if he can. Now, what drives that choice plan, and he's, if you've been keeping up with the newspaper this week, he's coming up with programs, and that's going to drive it. That's going to drive the feeder system. If I'm elected, I will recommend to him that in the elementary school, the STEM program that's starting at some of the elementaries, where do those children go? The next to the middle school and then to the high school. It's got to be a connect.
Okay, next question?
My name is Michelle Goldman. I have two children.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Yes. My name is Michelle Goldman, and I have two children in the Wake County Public School System. In the last two years, what do you think is the biggest accomplishment and biggest failure of the current school board?
Okay, yeah, you guys are keeping up better than I.
Well, there's a lot that I could say to this question, but I have one minute, so I'll do my best to answer this. I believe we are headed in the right direction. I believe we've taken a really good look at our children. We've put a lot of new opportunities into Wake County with our academy schools, Renaissance schools. We're stepping out of the box on things. If I was to say one thing that I would like to have seen improved, it was the communication, and I don't think that's really the last two years. I think that's been an issue. I believe that the parents, the citizens of Wake County, need to be able to access much more accurate information as to what's going on in our school system, at the school boards, at the planning meetings. People in this world want information, and they're used to getting it just like that because of the Internet. And so, that to me is one place I really would like to see us start. Thank you.
I think the accomplishment has been the emphasis on math placement, and I would like to see that expanded to advanced curriculum at the middle school and having students placed in rigorous courses at middle school. I think the thing we need to improve on is there's been such fragmentation of policymaking in the schools in the last two years, and I think we need to make sure that we have sounder policy and less divisiveness in our school system.
I think the school system is moving real slow. I think they're moving forward, but as the Chamber of Commerce pointed out, the school system has bogged themselves down with dealing with one or two issues for the last couple of years. And I think with this new election, with new people on the board, I think that's going to change. I think they're going to move forward and really accomplish some things. I think there've been some things accomplished, but they've been moving so slow because of the other issues that are bogging them down.
I think the bright spot in the past two years is perhaps, to the surprise of a lot of us, the hiring of the new superintendent. He's turned out to be his own man in many ways and not the puppet that some people thought he might be. But I'm reserving judgment on that. He's only been here seven months. Now, my biggest disappointment is that the power in charge of the school board continues to be influenced by special interest groups, and that continues to impact the morale of teachers.
You already answered that one? Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay.
Hi, I'm Vicki Adamson, and I live in District Six, and I have one child in the sixth grade. And my biggest frustration of the time of his tenure in public school is the lack of technology in his classroom. And any technology that has went into his classroom, the PTA has had to purchase. Ms. Williams, you were talking about the clicky thing. It's called a smart board. And the Sanderson, yeah, it's called a smart board. And the Sanderson PTA purchased that. Wake County did not. And my understanding is that for this technology to come into the schools, it's part of an upgrade. So, with this new bond, if I go to the polling place and I say I'm willing to pay the taxes for this $100 million or whatever you're going to need, how do I know that my school in District Six is going to get some technology that I'm not running a bake sale to try to get the money for?
That's an important question because we need to make sure that all of our schools have equity in the resources that you're speaking of, and I think it comes down to how we support our schools. One of the issues that you touch upon though with technology is we need to make sure that when we put technology in our schools, that the teachers have the training and the teacher development and the time to plan to use that technology. We can put a smart board in every classroom, but if we don't have a teacher who knows how to use that technology to teach the curriculum and to get deep into the curriculum with his or her students, it's not a good investment. So, we need to make sure that we give our teachers the time to plan and the resources that they need to be able to use all of what they have at hand to have an exciting learning environment for our students.
You have my vote on technology in the schools because this is what I always proposed for math and science technology. And let me tell you what's going on in other parts of the country that these companies are partnering with the schools, and that's what we need here in Wake County. We need a math-science high school. And in these high schools, I remember here in Wake County, when the school was wired for the Internet, well, guess what? We now have Internet 2. That's out here now, and we need to come on, get on board. They used to tell us then, and the informational highway is here. Now, Internet 2 will connect our students globally, and that's through some of the, that's something that we need to push here in Wake County schools.
When I started teaching in 1968, the height of technology was knowing how to thread a 16-millimeter projector. Things have changed a whole lot, and I saw that when I worked as a consultant for a textbook company. The technology is there, and the textbook companies want your business. We're paying probably $50 and more for textbooks these days, each one. It costs about $5 to produce those, each one. There are three boundaries in the country, which means that teachers never get the books by the time that school starts, and North Carolina is the third-largest purchaser of textbooks. Now, my suggestion is this, because I worked in editorial, go to something like a Kindle with every child's textbook needs on a Kindle. Now, the only problem I think we'll have is whether they lose them or not, but at least we'll be able to revise the textbooks more easily.
Well, now that I know what a smart board is, thank you. I'd never seen one before today, so now I know what they are. I was very impressed with Sanderson's PTA and also in speaking with the PTA president about the outreach via the principal into the neighborhoods, into the families that their children attend Sanderson, but also with the local businesses. He mentioned Home Depot, I believe it was. It was one of the home improvement stores. And I, you know, I look at our schools are a very important part of our community, and everyone in this community does need to be invested. And at this point, we are in a different time in America because of the economy, because of all the people out of work. Not everybody can help, but you know, there are some who can. And so, I look at it as, again, let's step out of that box. Let's look at this a little differently. I was very impressed with Sanderson, and I would love to share that with the rest of this county as to what they're doing. Thank you very much.
You're the last one. Oh, no, you guys are still there?
No, I'm not.
Oh, I thought you had stepped aside. You were done. Okay, no problem.
Okay. I actually have a question for you real quick. I have two very quick questions. Can I ask them both at the same time?
Like?
I think they'll be quick.
Okay.
I'm Amy Lee. I have two children in the Wake County Public Schools. My first question is, what do you think about the current proposal to change the grading policy? And my second question is, the programs that Ms. Williams is giving credit to the new board, such as STEM and Renaissance, didn't I see them spoken at the board table back in 2007?
Okay, Mr. Morgan?
Okay. When I was still in the classroom, we struggled with that question about working with the new grading system. And one of the things that used to always come up about how do you measure those benchmarks, and that's really what makes the difference, the benchmark of where that child is. So, I hate that's coming up because when I left, we had just started putting all our grading on computers. Most teachers are probably on computers. And computers use what? Numbers. So, here we go with something else. So, I tell you, and that was very good in a parental conference because you could instantly give the parent a printout of the child's performance and grades. So, and the second part of the question, because I got carried away with the...
Was STEM and Renaissance schools, hasn't that been discussed back in 2007 or earlier than this new board?
The only thing I said earlier about STEM and Renaissance schools, we need to have a pass for the middle school, for those same students, and the high school. And that's what I'm afraid we need to recommend to the superintendent. In other words, just don't give it to them in the elementary school and then stop it. They need somewhere to go with it.
Grades are always a tricky issue. I remember when 94 to 100 used to be an A. It's not anymore. I think what we need to be sure we're doing is measuring actual academic performance, no matter what kind of grade we use, and I've tried them all over. I even gave number grades for essays at one point in my career, just so we measure what we set out to measure and we ensure, E-N-S-U-R-E, ensure that our students are competitive when they get out into the world, whether it's in the workforce or in the academic world. Well, as long as they do go back, this is not a new thing, and as long as we follow through with the students and not just drop them off.
What I want to first respond to, the EVOs program. I personally think this is an excellent way to really get a clear message as to where is each student, where are their strengths, where have their grades been, and where should we place them going forward. The one thing I would like to see with that EVOs is that parents are given that information. I feel as a parent myself, as a grandparent, those report cards, those end-of-grade testing, we get all that. My question is, why are we not getting the EVOs? Why are the parents not getting the EVOs? I think that's a very, again, it's to make our schools more family-friendly. I think that would be important. And to answer your question about STEM and Renaissance, I'm going to be honest, I was not involved in 2007. I really don't know. So, thank you.
First on grading policy, I know that they've been working on that for years, and I can understand wanting to come up with a comprehensive policy, but I think that policy should be simple. I don't think we need to dictate from the board whether or not teachers can give extra credit or whether or not teachers can, what percentage of homework makes up their grades. We need to trust our teachers as professionals to be able to have that part of their grading left to teachers. So, I think if we have a grading policy, it needs to be much simpler than the current proposed policy that's coming up. As for Renaissance schools, that has been developed, I know Donna Hargens was instrumental years ago in getting that started. I think we need to make sure that we fund that and continue with the investments that we're putting in now, that that is sustainable. And I think that is an uncertainty, given that a lot of that money is coming from federal sources. We need to think through how we're going to sustain those excellent programs for those schools.
Yeah, if we could really speed it up, because I'm going to, you may be the...
I'll speed it up for you, ma'am. I'm a damn Yankee. I've been here for 40 years.
You may be our last question because we're running out of time.
First of all, I got to tell you folks, I've been here since 1971. I sent one child to school here for one year until I could get him into a religious education school. I sent all four of my children through religious education, all the way through high school and through the college system as best I could. All right? That's a starting point. I have supported every bond and every tax for the school system in North I have supported every bond and every tax for the school system in North Carolina because I spent a brief period of time as a school teacher, and I understand the value of educating children so they become useful citizens. I have a problem. My problem is real simple. When I got news of this diversity thing, I, I watched people busing children all over this county, from here to there and everywhere. I watched money being poured into it. I'd like to know something. I'd like to know how many people here with the fallout and dropout rates in the school system that we had really want to go back to that for the purpose of diversity or any other purpose. Neighborhood schools, neighborhood teachers, I don't care. It is none of those people.
Is that your question?
Who in this bunch of people running for office tells me they're concerned about the education of our children?
Okay, all right.
Bless your heart. Now, I think we've all told you that we're concerned about our children.
Yes, you have.
All right, all right, all right, all right. That's enough, 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 enough. I, I really think that, that, I think we'll just go to the next question. I'm sorry.
I'm Neil Reiman. I have two kids at Ligon. Next year, you're gonna lose about $26 or $27 million of federal money. That's the money that makes the difference and enabled most of these programs that the superintendent has enacted this year that have been widely received in a positive way. Now, nobody, let's suppose that none of these politicians in the room here are gonna make that money up for you. Nobody's gonna give you any money to replace the 27 million you lose. There's not gonna be any magical audit that's gonna identify any more government waste that you can cut. You're just gonna have to figure out, where are you gonna make the $26 million of cuts? I wanna know where each of you are gonna make those cuts. That's about 1.5% of your budget. So, I wanna know where each of you is gonna make those cuts, and if your, if your answer actually adds up to more than a million dollars, and it's not some politician's answer, I'll give you extra credit.
I've already given you my answer, and that's in the way that money's spent on supplies like textbooks. Huge savings opportunity there if we just take advantage of it, look at it. And with the massive buying power that Wake County has, I think that you'll find that the textbook companies are willing to work with us.
I'm trying to remember the figure at the school board meeting Tuesday night. Forgive me, it's somewhere in my notes, but I'm not putting my finger on it. There's a lot of money because of already what's happened with the moving children to schools closer to home right now, with money going forward, spending, saving on gas for our buses. I view this current plan, the potential assignment plan we're going into as yet, yet another opportunity to save a lot of money. There currently, just to make my point, there is a neighborhood of children in the most southwestern part of Wake County. These children are on a, elementary children, mind you, on a bus two hours every morning. And I wonder, why? Why? And how, if you wanna take it to the dollars, what is it costing to do that? My more concern is, why are we doing this to these little children?
I think to get to the previous issue of busing, we learned that recently that the average bus ride in Wake County is 16 minutes. 16 minutes, and that there are 23 routes that are over 90 minutes, and all but one of those is a magnet route. And so, that is a route that's long by choice. Parents are choicing into that magnet system. So, I think our buses, our buses are actually very efficient. We have, ridership is going up and our cost per pupil is going down. So, I think that has been one area where we've saved money. And I don't think I'll get the extra credit, Neil, because I don't, I, I don't, I, I know that we are, that David Neder and the folks in the, and have, and the folks in Wake County have gone through the budget with a fine-tooth comb. We have an excellent finance office, but we need to think hard about protecting the classroom and making sure that cuts don't affect our classroom teachers.
Okay, I found some money. Channel 5 said they're looking for some money now that the school system lost a couple years ago. I don't know if you saw that on there. I think they said a couple million. But anyway, our school system, it's got many other ways to get money. And one of them, if we push this, if we ask the superintendent to push this science model that I think he's in, he's thinking about, we can get money from the National Science Foundation. That's where a lot of the school systems all over the country, they get a bunch of money for that, to help with that science model that I think he's moving in that direction. And then, they have a department there in the school system, that's their job. They will find some money. So, that's my answer to you.
Okay, the last question.
It's part question, part clarification. I'm John Kenny. I'm the president. I've had the honor of being the president the last two years for Sanderson High School. And I wanted to clarify a couple of things about the clicker and the technology and how we went about doing it. Absolutely incredible thing. We, like all schools, went to the school board and said, "We need some money. It's not there." That did not stop us at Sanderson. We went out with a program called Desserts with Decker. Dr. Decker is the principal there. We went into the community of Sanderson. It's been here since 1968. And we went out and we raised almost a quarter of a million dollars for the students at Sanderson to have a clicker in each classroom. That came from the parents of this area. Came from the parents of the more affluent parents. The children that receive those are very humbled at Sanderson to receive them. The kids of the parents that gave it do not need those to succeed in a classroom. They open up their hearts, they open up their pocketbooks. And I don't know that there is another principal in this community that would go door-to-door into the communities. And we've turned Sanderson into a top 400 high school in this country, not the state, the entire country. It's what you do with the best and what you do with the kids that are most challenged. And we did that for the kids that were the most challenged. And we did it because we said, "This is staying in Sanderson's area. This is not going to Wake County Public School." Can you imagine if you'd said, "I need that kind of money for the Wake County Public School"? They wouldn't even answer the door. They wouldn't return my phone call, but they opened up, and we did it as a community. We did it for Sanderson.
Okay.
And here's the last thing. We went out to the neighborhoods, Summerfield North. We went over towards Crosswinds, Stonehenge, Brookhaven, and Quail Hollow. With this new plan, none of those neighborhoods go to Sanderson. We have gone to Sanderson since 1968.
Okay, do you have a question? I know it's wonderful. It's really wonderful.
Okay. My question is to the board members, what will they do to just make Sanderson, which is the only high school in Wake County that's working, what can they do to just leave us alone? We're not saying keep these kids out of here. I've been to the school board meetings. We're right there. What can you do to do that?
Okay, all right, that's a question. I, I don't really know that any of you could answer that in a minute, so I think I'm going to let them go to their closing statements, and you can ask them that afterwards, because I do think it's, it's clear that Sanderson is a, is a jewel of this district, but I don't know that there's anything we can deal with in one minute per candidate. And I think that at this point, your audience would be extremely grateful if you could make your closing remarks even shorter than the three minutes that I had promised you. And we will go in the following order. Mary Ann Weathers, George Morgan, I mean, Mary Ann Weathers, Donna Williams, Christine Kushner, and Georgia Morgan. And if you could be brief.
I will start by saying that, first of all, that I am proud to be a graduate of this school system. The education I got as a first-through-12th grade student here, and I can tell you every teacher's name. I loved school. It was the best place I ever had been. And I spent my career as a teacher and administrator and consultant, and the education I received in this school system has served me well. That's why I'm so sad to see what's happened to the school board. It breaks my heart to think that my sister is happy that her students, children don't go to the Wake County schools. I want the Wake County schools to be the kind of place where every teacher wants to teach, and every child can become whatever that child wants to be and has the dreams and the drive to make it happen. My concerns add up to concerns about the special interests that have impacted our school board. I happened to do an eight-year study, which became my dissertation on this subject. I studied every school system in the state. There were 139 of them at the time. And I found that the groups with the special interests had common beliefs. The groups I studied were the Religious Right, the Eagle Forum, and the Ku Klux Klan. And yes, I have been to Ku Klux Klan meetings. I avoided the evening functions and went only during daytime functions. They knew I was studying them, and so did the Religious Right. They, and they gave me all their material too. But I see the same forces impacting our school board now. They just have different names. They call themselves things like Civitas and Prosperity and the Tea Party. They're there and they're out to take over and privatize what we need to be concerned about with our public schools.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone for coming tonight, for attending, taking time out of your life. Thank you very much to our two great organizations for putting this together. I have never run for public office in my life, but my entire life has been about serving men, women, and children. It was four weeks ago today that I went downtown and signed those papers, and I will tell you, I was very nervous. It was almost like, I felt like I was about to step into the lion's den. But I have thought about this for a very long time. I've prayed about this for a very long time. And when God finally spoke to me, I listened. And I will say, every day since that day, something has happened in my day. Someone has called, someone has said something that just confirms in my heart that this is what I'm supposed to do. But I will say, while I was thinking and praying about it, I did have a whole lot of folks here say, "Oh, don't do that. You can't win. This district is stacked." But yet, here I am. And I think it happened, really, it made me think about, three years ago, this September 15th. My youngest son is a Marine. He was on a plane going to Iraq. And it was a Monday morning, and I looked myself in the mirror that morning, and I said through my tears, because it was a tough morning, "Look what your child is doing for his country. What are you doing?" And my answer was a simple nothing. I had raised four children. I had a busy business. I was a busy volunteer with Girl Scouts and church and all this and that. But as far as really getting involved with my community and what was happening, and I will say, on the political scene, if you want, but to me, it's not, I'm not even gonna say what side, doesn't matter. But it was that day that my life changed. And what I did from that point on was, number one, to learn more about this community and to learn more about things that I had never paid attention to. I had always voted, but honestly, I would look at my husband and say, "Who are we voting for?" I didn't pay attention. So, the question about 2007, I really don't know. I wasn't paying attention. But my life has changed dramatically in the last three years. I've put 40 to 80 hours in, in, in this county. I have spent probably, on an average, five nights a week out at meetings, getting educated on what's going on. And then, what I've done is take that information and share it with others in this community so that people are awake. Because I do think part of why we're where we are is too many of us weren't paying attention. And it was through all that that I guess has led me to this, because I feel like we are in this world to make a difference, and I do believe that children are the future for all of us. And so, right now, this election, I feel that every voter has a clear, clear choice. There are very different messages here. And I would ask for your support, October 11th, and I thank you very much for being here.
I also thank you for coming out on this wonderful summer night to spend time learning about our candidates and learning about this election. It's a critical election for our school system, October 11th, and I hope you'll go out and make an educated vote. I have been endorsed by the Wake County NCIE, and I'm proud to say that I carry the confidence of the teachers of this county to be their voice and to advocate for them on the Wake County School Board. That's important to me. I have been paying attention for the last two years, and before that, to school policy issues. And I will hit the ground running in December to be a fully-informed board member and to keep doing what I've been doing since I decided to run in June, in talking with parents, with voters, and with residents of this county, to make sure I become the best advocate for public schools in Wake County on the, on the school board. As I've said, I've, I'm a product of public education. I grew up in Fayetteville and attended public schools there. I went on to be, to a Morehead Scholar at UNC Chapel Hill, and I've gotten an advanced degree in public policy. I've worked professionally as a policy analyst, and I bring those skills to the board, which I think are needed when, as we go forward in developing solid student assignment policy, academic policy, that will strengthen public education in Wake County. I'm not bringing a personal agenda to the board. I'm not bringing a political agenda to the board. I bring my commitment to public education and to public schools in Wake County. And as an effective board member, I want to listen, and I also want to represent the entire county. We're all interconnected, and I think issues in District 6 are, for the most part, very similar to issues in other parts of the county when it comes to academics and rigor. I also want to make sure that we end the divisiveness that's currently on the school board. I've, I've mentioned that several times, because I think it's a truly, you do have a choice among our candidates today as far as, as divisiveness goes. There's been too much name-calling, there's been too much infighting, and we need to make sure that we have nine independent-minded school board members making sound decisions for our children. Not any one board member has all the answers. That's why there are nine board members. And we need to make sure that all nine are working independently, looking at data, looking at research, and making the best decisions for our students and our teachers. I think it's important to note that this is, again, an important, this might be the most important election for our schools. The direction needs to change, and I want to be part of a school board that works for every child in every neighborhood, because strong schools make strong neighborhoods. And that's true in District 6, and it's true throughout the county. Thank you.
Again, thank you for coming out tonight. As I move around the county at some of the meetings, I think it's more people here than at those meetings with the superintendent. Representing District 6 on the Wake County Board of Education would be a challenging and rewarding task. If I am elected to the school board, I will work to strengthen the achievement levels of all the students enrolled in Wake County Public School System.
Okay, I guess we're done. I just wanted to say a couple things. One, I think Wake County has some of the most dedicated and most wonderful voters and people who are willing to run for office. I think it's great that you were all here, and you show such passion for your schools and for your community, and thank you very much.
Presented by Wake Up Wake County and the Wake County League of Women Voters, this has been the 2011 Wake County School Board District 6 Candidate Forum. Election Day for Wake County School Board races is October 11. Early voting and same-day registration runs September 22nd through October 8th. For more information about Wake Up Wake County, please visit wakeupwakecounty.org. For more information about the Wake County League of Women Voters... For more information about the Wake County League of Women Voters, please visit lvwwake.org. You can learn more about this year's Raleigh and Wake County candidates at ncvoterguide.org.